Will you give us a moment and I'll let you know.
Okay.
I'm fine as well, Mayor.
Okay, good to go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our November seventeenth council meeting. Our first order of business is a call to order in the rise for the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is the reading of the sunshine statement in roll call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lauren Stats.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings law. This meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, on the public bulletin on North Avenue on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Silento?
Present.
Council President Sigmund?
Here.
Mrs. Albertson?
Here.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Here.
Item number three on the agenda is approval of our meeting minutes. Can I have a motion and second on our regular meeting minutes of November third, two thousand and twenty-five?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second.
Any comments, redaction, or additions to the meeting minutes as they currently stand? Without hearing any, can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Stats?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yeah.
Item number four on the agenda is the introduction of an ordinance, two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of property in and by the borough of Denellen in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey appropriating one, one point one million therefore and authorizing the issuance of one million forty-five thousand bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Vandermark.
As introductions of ordinances are not discussed, I will provide a short summarization. This is the acquisition of, uh, consideration of acquisition of, uh, two oh five North Washington Avenue, the old Investors Bank property. The town is looking to purchase it for the purposes of municipal use, more specifically, uh, a municipal parking lot for downtown usage and parking for our downtown and then eventual municipal facilities as we do a full assessment. Um, so that's what this is, and, uh, it'll be publicly heard and possibly adopted at the next council meeting on December first. So with that explanation, uh, members of the public, if it goes through tonight, can find this ordinance uh, at the municipal clerk's office or online for your review and then come back on December first to discuss the matter. Uh, can I, can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Stats?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Okay. Item number five are resolutions. We have resolutions three eighty through three eighty-six, and, uh, Mrs. Stats, if you would do the honor and then provide the opportunity for mayor and council to discuss.
Resolution number three eighty is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Mrs. Vandermark, sorry. Resolution number three eighty-one is to approve a microblading license for Latrice Skin Beauty.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three eighty-two is to approve public health services and inter local service contract with Middlesex County.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Vandermark.
So regarding this, uh, this is the extension of our shared service with the Middlesex County Department of Health. Uh, Patricia Clemente has been the official that we've had. Um, I asked, uh, Mr. Robertson, our legal counsel, to of course, review the contract. It's a nominal increase for the next several years comparative of what they have been providing in services. And, uh, Mr. Miller and Mrs. Stats, I've asked that they provide an evaluation of, uh, the teams in the health departments, um, role, and, uh, they both said that they, Patricia and the team do a good job for the, the amount of money that we, uh, pay and that they would recommend, uh, that we continue services. So, Mr. Miller, Mrs. Stats, if you'd like the opportunity to say a few words to council?
Uh, Mayor, I'll say something briefly and then, uh, the stats, because, uh, the stats deals directly with, um, the Middlesex, uh, Department of Health, but Patricia has been, uh, a huge asset to the borough. Anytime there's an issue or concern, um, she's always on top of it and she gets things moving really fast. Uh, she works very professional for the borough and, uh, truthfully, I think she's done a great job. Um, I'm gonna let, uh, the stats discuss a little bit more on her part because she does deal with, um, Patricia.
Sure.
Most, multiple times during the week.
Yep, Patricia visits the office almost every day. Um, she does her inspections. Her reports are accurate, thorough, and they're always submitted on time. She means maintains attention to detail when conducting inspections and provides corrective guidance to all of the establishments. She can, uh, inspect any and everything. Um, we have an inspector Paris and he just does, um, like the nail salons, barber shops, and smoking establishments. So he's only here when needed. But Patricia's work, uh, she's outstanding, like, everything and anything she does, she's great. So, as Alex said, she'll be good for the next couple of years, which is the contract, which is twenty-six and twenty-seven, which you would be approving tonight.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions or further discussion on this matter? Without hearing any, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three eighty-three is authorizing payment to Kluger Healy Law Firm.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
Mr. Robertson, do you want to touch base on this one a little bit?
Uh, yes, Mayor, briefly, this, this is a resolution authorizing the payment to the Kluger Healy Law Firm. The law firm had direct, direct, representative of the borough in litigation following insurance claim, uh, the Middlesex Insurance Fund has failed to make payment to that law firm. Uh, there was, uh, the claim against the borough for payment for their services. Uh, the borough was able to resolve and settle that claim at about fifty percent uh, of the claimed amount. And, uh, this authorizes payment in two separate payments, uh, one at five year this month, the balance at the end of February, and to authorize, uh, the borough to enter into settlement payment, obviously, resolved on the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Um, council has no further questions. I think we can, uh, take a roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three eighty-four is naming a conditional redeveloper for the property commonly known as Block Thirty-four, Lot Twenty-two on the tax maps of the borough and authorizing the execution of a conditional redevelopment agreement with respect thereto.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
So this is the old laundromat at the corner of Sanford and Bound Brook Road. Um, it's been purchased and it's in a redevelopment zone, so, uh, the developer is looking to present a project based upon our redevelopment plan and our zoning laws. And, uh, so this allows them the opportunity to work with our professionals to come back to mayor and council, who is the redevelopment agency, to, uh, present said project. So, um, that's what this is.
I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three eighty-five is naming a conditional redeveloper for the properties commonly known as Block Two, Lots Eleven and eleven point oh one on the tax maps of the borough and authorizing the execution of a conditional redevelopment agreement with respect thereto.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
Similar to resolution three eighty-four, this is, uh, the same developer looking to do improvements to their current property. Uh, one twelve, uh, North Washington Avenue, uh, facade improvement as well as I believe it's some additional living spaces. So this provides them the opportunity, the same thing as the prior one, to, uh, design a project, come back to the mayor and council through, uh, the, the conditional redevelopment phase and work with our professionals to present a project that is in line with our redevelopment planning zoning laws. So, that's what this does as well.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three eighty-six is authorizing the transfer of appropriations for the two thousand and twenty-five operating accounts.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Okay, item number six on the agenda are council reports. Councilwoman, uh, Vandermark, anything to report this evening?
Yes, um, October, the police department had one thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight CAD entries, four hundred and twenty-four motor vehicle tickets, three hundred and sixty-two motor vehicle stops, twenty-two arrests, twelve DUIs, DWIs, and twenty-one crashes, and that's it.
Okay, thank you for reporting that out, and, uh, as always, great job to our, our law enforcement for the job well done in serving protecting our community. Um, Councilwoman Rios?
Yes. Uh, buildings and grounds, the public works crew has removed the flags and hometown hero banners from downtown. The crew will be preparing for the holiday decorations within the next few weeks. The borough is looking into upgrading security system in its building. Parcel report has continued, um, parcel has continued videoing and cleaning the borough sewer system as part of their service to the borough. The Denellen Public Library, I would like to provide an update as we continue the search for a permanent library director. The library will have an interim director in place to secure, ensure operation runs smoothly. Our interim director will be onsite Monday through Thursday, both in the morning and the afternoon. If you see him around the library, please feel free to say hello and welcome him to our, as he supports our community during this transition period. All of our current programs remain in place, and we encourage residents to check the library's Facebook page or website for updates and any additional programs that may be added. If you have any questions or need assistance pertaining to library operations, please direct them to Keith or to any library trustee. Uh, we appreciate everyone's continued support as we work forward. We look towards selecting a permanent director for the Denellen Public Library, and the next board of ed meeting will be November eighteenth at seven thirty. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Albertson?
Yes, uh, the Friends of Denellen Public Library have their annual bags and bling sale on this Sunday, uh, November twenty-third at the library. But if you'd like to be one of the first to shop, you can stop in at, so on Saturday at six thirty PM, six thirty to eight PM, five dollars for sip and shop. You can have mocktails and snacks and be the first to shop. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Lance, anything to report?
Yes, for the recreation department, um, recreation basketball is coming up soon. Program registration is open for children in grades K through six. Basketball will take place on Saturday mornings at the Faber Gym. The program will begin January third. You can register online at www.denellenparksandrecreation.com. The registration deadline is November twenty-eighth. Avoid the late fee and register today. The recreation department is also in need of volunteer coaches for the basketball season. So if you're interested in being a volunteer coach and being part of something great, email Rec Director Kelly Cedar at kcedar@denellenborough.com. This program can only run if they have enough coaches. Christmas is also coming up. The annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony will take place Sunday, December seventh at six PM at Washington Memorial Park. This is always a fantastic community event with hot chocolate, caroling, a brass band, and a visit from Santa, the man himself. Please join us as we bring in the holiday season together. And finally, letters to Santa, or not finally, but letters to Santa. Santa's elves made a special trip from the North Pole last week and dropped off the Santa mailbox. Mail your letter to Santa by December twelfth. Be sure to include your return address on the envelope and don't forget to check your mail before Christmas for a reply from Santa. The Santa mailbox is located on Prospect Avenue between the entrance to Borough Hall and the Denellen Borough Police Department. A friendly reminder from the North Pole Security Team, the Denellen Police Department is on high alert after last year's attempted letter theft by a certain green individual. Stay tuned for updates. The recreation department, along with Denellen American Legion and VFW, would like to thank all those involved and attended who also attended the Veterans Day Ceremony. It was a beautiful day and a fantastic event supporting our veterans, and that's all.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman, and we'll be on, we'll be looking out for that green person. Um, Council President Sigmund?
Uh, yes, uh, as usual, I just want to thank all of the soccer coaches, uh, the volunteers that, uh, helped this season be so wonderful and look forward to see you on the basketball court when that starts. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Councilman Scott?
For DPW, they continue to clean the downtown and parks and properties, weekly leaf cleanup in the parks and leaf cleanup downtown. I'm sure after yesterday was a mess. Crew has continued leafbag collection and a reminder, leafbag curbside pickup will continue only through the end of the year. Uh, they prepped the park for the Veterans Day Ceremony, insisted the police with traffic control during the ceremony. As mentioned earlier, they removed the flags and the downtown hero banners. And they continue to service the DPW equipment and police vehicles, and they're still preparing for winter equipment for the snow that's coming. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Um, I'll be brief tonight. Uh, first and foremost, I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated on Veterans Day and honoring our veterans, a job well done, and it's, uh, it's a beautiful ceremony to, uh, like I said, uh, honor and remember our veterans and those who made the ultimate sacrifice. Um, New Jersey American Water, uh, the two thousand and twenty-five projects, uh, New Jersey American Water is nearing completion of its two thousand and twenty-five work. Uh, crews will be, uh, tying in new water mains at several intersections and finishing the last remaining water service connections. Uh, business administrator Alex Miller and I recently met with American Water to discuss their two thousand and twenty-six plans to replace a water mains along Fairview Avenue and Second Street, parts of Second Street that we haven't done, um, from Lincoln Avenue to Madison Avenue. Uh, this winter, the project is expected to be complete, completed by the, uh, end of March. Um, the schedule will allow Fairview Avenue and all streets that receive new mains in two thousand and twenty-five to be paved before the start of the Second Street Phase Two DOT project, uh, which will run from Madison Avenue to Washington Avenue. And again, I, I, I am gonna thank everybody for their patience as American Water has been doing this work in Denellen. I know it's been an inconvenience. I know it's been a headache. Um, you know, we, we, as council members and the mayor, we, we drive our streets to where they're doing work and we, we share the same pain. But when they present the opportunity to spend over twenty million dollars in our municipality of funds that they have to spend by two thousand and thirty-one, um, we're gonna make sure that and advocate that those dollars get spent in Denellen. Uh, that's our job is Denellen. And so they're replacing very old water mains and pipes that are over eighty-year-old, eighty years old, some are, some are wood, some are wood, and so it's, um, you know, while it's a, a, a short-term inconvenience, we recognize that. Um, to have passed up on the opportunity to not have them spend that kind of money in Denellen, um, I would say would have been irresponsible of us as a local government. Uh, a lot of this work that they're doing underground, the infrastructure, none of us are gonna be around when they have to redo everything again. Um, because it's gonna last a long time, um, hopefully. But, um, again, I do apologize for the inconvenience, but it's important that we get the work done. And based upon the ordinances that we've passed over the several years, uh, it's required that anybody who comes in and touches the roads has to repave all the roads again that they touch. So, um, like I said, short-term inconvenience for a long-term goal and a benefit to our community. Um, Second Street Phase Two, Madison Avenue to Washington Avenue, uh, bids for the project have been received and are now under review by CME, our engineer. Uh, the borough expects to announce the winning contractor within the next few weeks. Uh, construction is anticipated to begin in spring of two thousand and twenty-six, possibly early summer. Um, and will include replacement of, uh, damaged curbs, replacement of severely deteriorated sidewalks, uh, select catch basin and stormwater improvements, full milling and paving, and enhanced striping to, to ease the traffic, uh, uh, vehicular traffic. Um, the Washington Avenue beautification project, uh, this project, this project began today and includes the installation of new LED decorative lights along the three hundred block of Washington Avenue and on South Washington Avenue, uh, from North Avenue to the railroad bridge along sidewalk, along with sidewalk and tree work. So, a nice enhancement for our downtown and was funded through a grant. Uh, decorative lights update, PSCNG has informed our business administrator Alex Miller that new decorative LED lights on Washington Avenue from North Avenue to Denellen Avenue are expected to be installed by December, and we continue to do our assessment of older lights throughout the entire town. Once they replace them with LED and we see what that improvement does, we will then continue our efforts on finding, finding if there needs to be areas of, uh, additional lights throughout town. Um, my final note, uh, US Senator Andy Kim's visit to Denellen this past weekend, so on September, uh, September, I apologize. Saturday, November fifteenth, uh, the Borough of Denellen Administration, I welcomed, uh, US Senator Andy Kim and his team for a small business walk along North Avenue. I'd invited the Senator, uh, following ongoing conversations through my role with the Raritan Valley Line Mayor, uh, Raritan Valley Line Mayor's Alliance. Uh, during the visit, he met with several local businesses and heard firsthand how the, how essential the Denellen Train Station is to our local economy. Uh, we also discussed needed, uh, station upgrades and the importance of the Gateway Project, uh, whose future unfortunately remains a little uncertain at this time, and how that's important to sustaining our downtown growth in the local and regional economies. Um, this was a follow-up to September site visit with our state Senator John Bramnik and Assemblywoman Nancy Munoz and Michelle Mazzacutis, uh, Sue Altman from Senator Kim's office, and NJ Transit officials. Um, Senator Kim toured the Denellen Train Station, uh, to see the challenges our, our commuters are facing. Uh, the visit reinforced the need for bipartisan action to improve, um, to improve both the station and the Raritan Valley Line, and, uh, I shared our infrastructure priorities, uh, the urgency of securing funding uh, for overdue improvements and the benefits of targeted investments would bring to rioters with improvements such as that. Um, I remain in close communication with federal and state offices, along with members of the Raritan Valley Line Mayor's Alliance to advocate for station upgrades and for the expanded one-seat rides. Uh, so, to conclude, to conclude that visit, Senator Kim joined a ride and talk from Denellen to Westfield with Councilwoman Trina Rio, so thank you for being in attendance. Uh, Lauren Myers of downtown, of the Denellen Downtown Management Organization and other residents impacted by commuting concerns. Um, commuters on the ride shared their daily experiences and emphasized the importance of fully funding Gateway Phases One and Two and enhancing and advancing the Hunter Flyover Project and ex, and expanding the direct services to New York Penn Station. So just want to extend my thanks to business administrator Alex Miller, our director of community development, Derek White, special project advisor Sharon Roundtree, and Rutgers Eagleton graduate fellow Ashley Rowley, as well as our public information officer Billy George for joining us and for their dedication. And I just want to say a genuine thank you to Senator Kim and his team for spending time in Denellen that day, engaging with our small businesses and listening to our community's priorities. Um, I, I do believe this is the spirit of, uh, and the type of bipartisanship that we need, not just in Denellen, our miracle mile, but across the state and our country moving forward. So, uh, again, thank you to the center for joining us and highlighting an important issue for, uh, not just Denellen, but the Raritan Valley Line and, uh, this area of New Jersey as a whole. Um, that's my report for this evening. Um, there's no council discussions listed on the agenda, so department heads, anything going on in IT there, Ryan? I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry, so.
I realize the mics actually face the other direction. So, we have two microphones set up right now facing towards the crowd, so if anyone wants to speak during like public comment, uh, anyone that's gonna be online would be able to hear them. Uh, this is just, uh, an experiment. Me and Billy were messing around with it earlier and seeing if it would be beneficial for us to have this.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Robertson, anything from legal?
Uh, no report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Stats, anything from clerk's office, register's office?
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Miller, administration?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, um, anything from DPW?
No, uh, guys are just doing a lot of leaf cleanup, uh, throughout the borough, but that'll continue for the next, uh, month or so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anything from police department lieutenant?
Can you hear me?
I can vaguely hear you.
He said no report.
Okay. Rescue squad, I saw you in the, in the house, anything?
Uh, Denellen Rescue Squad in October responded to forty-six calls for service. When you were talking about the, um, train station and the upgrades needed, uh, I just wanted to remind that, uh, a few years ago, we had to do CPR on the train. And not having an elevator to take a patient down makes a big impact on the outcome for the patient. So if you can pass that along to people, we would really appreciate this. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to talk about, um, is, we have some problems with the, with some of the new developments in being able to gain access into the buildings. A lot of these have security, uh, code keys. Co, um, and, uh, that's something that we're probably as a, as a town gonna need to come up with a solution to. I recently found out that, uh, some, in some municipalities, uh, police, local police departments have access to knox box keys uh, in the state of New Jersey, so it might be something worth us looking into. As our, as our officers are on the calls every time we're going, that'll be helpful. Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief, and I appreciate you bringing up that last point. That's important for us to be aware of and, uh, we'll work with, uh, Alex and, uh, Derek White on addressing that concern and speaking with Mr. Robertson on, on how we handle all that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's important. Is anybody from fire department in the audience? I heard Chaplin Morgan's voice. Okay, sounds good, Chaplin. Okay, so if there's no other, uh, department head reports, uh, item number nine on the agenda is public comment. Uh, we ask that if anybody wishes to address the mayor and council, we ask that kindly that you would state your name and your residency, and, uh, if you're able to step up to the microphone so we can hear you, and, uh, um, if it needs to be brought to you, uh, we can handle that as well, so.
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Tony Faber. Uh, I actually live, uh, fifteen minutes away from here in Scotch Plains, so thank you for allowing me to speak here. Uh, I'm actually here to talk about something serious and, uh, make a request that you consider passing a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act, which is a bill before the, uh, Assembly and Senate here in New Jersey in committee and is being considered being advanced in the next two months in the lame duck session. The point of the Immigrant Trust Act is that it, uh, disallows, uh, cooperation between local governments and the immigrant, federal immigration authorities, um, which is, uh, a really crucial matter in times like these as we see federal immigration authorities, um, acting unfortunately illegally and not in, uh, accordance with their tradition. in, uh, accordance with their traditional, uh, mission of, uh, removing, uh, dangerous criminals, but instead looking to, you know, exercise a maximum cruelty upon people in the state as an example in the recent raids in Edison and Woodbridge where, uh, thirty five to forty, uh, uh, warehouse workers were, uh, detained in each of those raids. Uh, the vast majority of all of those workers were here legally, either having work permits or, uh, uh, were on their way to green cards. Uh, in my hometown in Scotch Plains, we have a, we, I just saw a local social media, uh, video of immigration agents trying to bust into a car forcefully, uh, breaking the windows to remove people. They're doing these without, um, without any legal, uh, legal authority other than how somebody looks. Um, it's you as a community can make a statement to the Senate and Assembly as they consider whether to pass this legislation, uh, that you support this, that you support the rule of law in this country. Um, and that you support, um, uh, immigrants being able to be treated with due process and that the safety of all of us is important. If anyone, uh, if local police and governments cooperate with immigration authorities, it erodes the trust in that community. People in the community will not come forward to the police if they think they may, uh, be detained for reporting a crime, for instance, or going to the hospital or the DMV or even a school. Um, I sent you all a, uh, email earlier today that contains, uh, a sample wording for such a resolution and also some more information about the Immigrant Trust Act. You can ask me or respond to that email with any other concerns or questions. Thanks so much for listening. Take care.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Faber, for bringing that to our attention. Um, we will speak with Legal and we will, uh, see where the league municipalities and the New Jersey Conference of Mayors uh, also view that resolution. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Are there any other members of the public?
I'm so sorry. I just would like to mention, if you don't mind, in, in ten seconds, a number of, uh, recent municipalities have recently passed such resolutions. Just for your information, both Scotch Plains, Fanwood, Union County, Somerset County, Highland Park, New Brunswick, Cranberry, lots of local municipalities are doing this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Faber. Uh, any other members of the public? Please state your name and your residency. Without hearing any, we will close that portion of the meeting and we appreciate everybody's time. Uh, next up is item number ten on the agenda. We have no executive session, so that would be resolution three eighty seven, uh, for adjournment. Uh, if we have council members who would like to motion in second.
Move it, Sigmund. Second, Scott.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Okay, uh, thanks, everybody. God bless you all. And, uh, December first at seven PM is our next council meeting. You can either join in chambers or virtually. So be well and.